I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Free to God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we come together at this time to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with our community leaders and help them to be wise in their decision-making for the good of the community and all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is ripe and good. Grant them humility to always seek your will in all that is done and said. Finally, let us pray for peace in the world and for health and happiness in our community, whether our impact is to be big or small, affecting many or affecting one. Let us use our time and talents to make a positive difference in the world. We ask these things in due respect.
Public input? Anybody here with wishes to speak? Seeing none, I amend the city agenda, and I can tell you I have two. Item I is GSI Engineering. You have some information at your place there. And then under other, we'll cover third-party questions from the audit. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Very none, let's move on to the mayor's report. Please note the February meetings as they are listed there. Congratulations to Kate on her award with Blue Cross Blue Shield from the KRPA, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about that step-up? I mean, last time you told us now that you've received the award. What exactly is...
The award essentially was for healthy communities, so they awarded, I'm not actually quite sure how many whole communities applied for the award, but they awarded six different communities for being a healthy community, and that was through initiatives, programs, what have you, things of that nature. And along with it, they gave you $2,000 or $5,000 for future programming, and so we're looking to put that towards our adult program that both Gary and I are going to keep working on, so.
Good, well, congratulations to you and your leadership in that area. Study session on Thursday?
For infrastructure.
Infrastructure, 5:30 on Thursday. Do you know how many will not be here, or anybody won't be here on Thursday? I think there's 5:30 to 6:00 is a meal, and then we'll start the program. If you have any point after that, we can talk about it. That's okay, the board will be here in a short. Will staff be here, or will we shortly?
Limited staff.
Great. Moving on to the consent agenda, what do you hear desire?
Move to group.
Second. Good move to second. Go call, please.
Hold on, it's ahead of me. Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Emil?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
Item carried. Moving on to appointments. Will you rise and tell us who you wish to appoint?
We've asked Rama Shugren to be a part of the Storm Board. She is the vice president of the school at the Silverstone, and I actually know her personally from Greatland.
Okay.
She'll be great.
Can I give you a complete board then?
Nope.
Still short?
Yep.
One or two?
One or two.
What is your desire on Rama Shugren?
Would be first.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Further questions, right? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those oppose, say o. No debate. Thank you, and Rama's not here.
No.
So, no picture tonight. Planning and zoning, Gary, anything?
Minutes are in the meeting or in the agenda.
Okay. No action, no action accounted. All business, leave a motion to bring back the water. Apologize, water we made request. Great.
Last meeting, I had a citizen talk about a water leak requesting a refund on part of their bill due to the water leak and closing your packet. Is a staff recap of the issues surrounding the leak and also from our municipal code, which essentially says that anything, once the water passes through the meter, cost of that water is responsibility of whoever the utility account is with. The, as the report says, from the narrative, went out the first time, found no evidence of the leak, and the meter, the hand on the meter wasn't even moving. The next month, the rate was, or the cost was high again. Contacted City Hall, went out and looked this time, and there was an obvious leak because the pit had water in it. Contacted the water superintendent, and then they went out, pumped the water, and discovered a leak in a fitting on the other side of the meter. And they actually put... They put a valve on that side, Tim? The valve's on our side. Okay. But they... They fixed it. Which typically we do not do. That's responsibility of the property owner.
I see that here it also says that the material used was not K copper, whatever, you know, the Morgans copper, I assume, and that, and so... So, what action are we looking for here tonight?
Well, either to grant a rebate or refund of some kind, or not grant a rebate or refund of some kind for why? I think that the things that are stated here have been very clear, that the city is not responsible for this. I think we should go forward under that assumption. I'm not quite sure what kind of a motion they're not going to get there. I had the same kind of thing at my house. I used triple the amount of water, and I had a leak, and I baked it. I also fixed it.
I'll say I did the same thing.
Yeah.
Same thing happened to me at the meter.
Has someone visited with the resident about this recap?
Yes, in fact, all the material that you're seeing tonight has been shared with the other.
Thank you.
To do no action bill, do we need an action?
No.
Okay.
The request has been made, it's just a decision to enact on a request. You can either just let it sit, or you can deny it, either way.
Okay. Do you wish an action or no action?
Up to this body, whatever you want to.
For the sake of our distinct audience and for an educational moment, if something like this happens again, is the city the first course of a phone call, or is it a plumber?
I mean, typically, the phone call comes to us first. We go check it out, and then we inform of the highest... If they have a high bill, they need to check with us first. Well, it's going to be on their side, but, you know, maybe we want to check our meter first.
Alright, thank you.
For those in the viewing public, what Tim said was to make sure if you get a high bill, that you called the city, and then we, the architect, did go and check the meter.
Things do happen.
I'm not sure they get your idea. Alright. Very none, let's go to B, and now we need a motion to remove it from the table.
I'd like to return to the table discussion for the Sunstein Conference Center to janish for our service.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Follow the same sign. So now we can discuss and talk about the cleaning service that was brought back from last time. Please tell us all about it.
The amended agenda item has the same recommendation as was previously listed, but above that, you'll see a couple of different options to note your requests from last time. So, the recommendation could change based on your wishes.
Do you have a different recommendation based on the information presented?
My concern is the budget. The increase in this budget item wasn't planned for this year. So, if you want to go over that, I don't feel like that's my call.
Okay.
I mean, I don't feel comfortable giving a recommendation to go over budget.
These two options that you list here, though, do not reflect, at least what I heard the last meeting, which at least one of the options should be, what does it cost to do the main floor? And also the bathrooms upstairs, not the entire second floor. And that's nothing reflected here.
Okay, I must have missed that.
I said, it was my recollection, I'm awfully wrong.
I didn't get one where just the bathrooms upstairs.
Well, I mean, to me, when we discussed it last time, that was the thing that seemed would be the most helpful to you, and I may be wrong about that, but I would like, at least like, to see if that's a possibility.
Go ahead.
I have a question about option two. It says to be, it says to be used at staff discretion during calendar year 2017. So, does that mean that you could say, hey Bob, we don't need you upstairs this time? Or, hey Bob, the bathrooms need to be hit, would you mind doing that? And might reflect an adjustment in the entire budget to do the second floor?
No, my thought with option two is that you would approve a certain amount of dollars to be used for cleaning on the second floor. Now, my intent with that would be, like, I know there are certain months that are really busy already. And so, my intent would be to have that second floor fully cleaned on those particular months or requests up to the use of that dollar amount, which would be about 12 cleanings of the second floor. So, I don't think I would use it, like, just for the bathrooms, I would use it for the whole thing.
So, and it may not be used once a month, it might actually be used...
Like, my guess is that it would be April, May, June, because those are super duper busy. So, that's why it would be those individual times, rather than like a consistent.
There seemed to be some consensus at the last meeting that your time is probably better spent selling, providing customer service, being indispensable to your guests, as opposed to working until 3:00 in the morning cleaning upstairs, I mean.
I agree.
I think there was consensus there on that. So, I will make the recommendation that we opt for option two. It does allow the person we trusted with the management of the building to use her discretion when those 12 weeks of second floor cleaning, second floor cleaning are utilized. Second.
Heard a motion, the second discussion. So, the amount over the, is it $1,500 now, is that what we're...
It's for $6,700.
Right, but the original option one was, what was in the budget, $5,200? Was in the budget, so the extra amount is $1,500. That is outside the budget, would have to be found somewhere.
Right, which I will know that we don't have. I'm just, I'm well aware that that is something that we don't have right now.
Well, my concern is still, there's an awful big gap between option one and option two.
Dollar gap here, David, or cleaning gap?
No, no, a dollar gap. I mean, that's why I thought to look at cleaning the bathrooms and stuff like that. I mean, you know, I'm not, we're not the ones doing it, so... We, easy for us to say, well, we can just go ahead and clean on the second floor, that seems fine.
Greg, as the leader for city and staff in that, are you concerned about the $1,500? And how we find that versus the comments that I think Betty made, and was very much the settlement of this council, that Amy's time is better spent selling and cleaning.
Which I appreciate.
I think we can find it somewhere. I know, can't tell you exactly where right now, but...
I appreciate that, because I think that is...
That contract services, I mean, that we have contract services? What do we do when we have...
Well, this, the $5,200 is right now in contract services, not $6,700. So, this is, yeah, I mean, so, yeah, we got to find it, like, somewhere. But I can't tell you exactly where it's going to be right now, because I don't know.
I was surprised that the second, cleaning the second floor was more expensive.
Because it's more space. Because you have to think on the first floor, you have a kitchen and the office. Whereas on the second floor, you have more space and the boardroom, which is kind of not an active space on the first floor. And I think it's harder, because there's, it's not like a quick vacuum, I mean, that floor takes a long time to mop.
A lot of windows.
Right, and a lot of windows, yeah. And the ledge, that's kind of harder, you know? So, I think that it's consistent, that it would be more.
Amy, another question I would ask, there are sometimes, you have to call on your staff to help with that?
Yeah.
Do you feel that that is something that maybe has interfered with retention of employees?
No, not currently.
I do believe that the $1,500, we will get the benefit of having her available much more than this $1,500.
Additional care?
Yeah, well, one more thing I just want to clarify is, is $1,500 over budget, is that, that's the amount that's outside the budget?
Everybody understands the motion? Option two, elder bound jury.
I've got it in your motion.
I was asking for it.
Oh, it's...
I think it'd be $6,700.
That's total, yeah, but you've already got, isn't the first part all written? No, because we're down, we didn't under it. Okay.
Inclusion areas, I want to be a part of. Everybody understands the motion? Go call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emil?
Yes.
Mark?
Option carried, thank you. Good luck selling.
Thanks.
Let's go to new business. I made utility disconnect policy, medical necessity.
I have in front of you a policy regarding disconnection of people or persons that have medical need. This is a policy procedure to disconnect for non-payment. While we don't have a large number of individuals that have filed a medical necessity deed following, we do have some that do so, and when they do, we're talking dollars in four-digit numbers. This would allow us to give them notice to bring their account in line, or within that 30-day time period, they would be disconnected. This policy does, we're one is allowed by Kansas Corporation Commission regulations. Even though we're not regulated by the KCC, they do have regulations that outline it for investor on utilities and how they can handle this type of situation. So, with that opened up to...
What is your desire?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
And to make clear, some of the medical devices that we would be talking about could be a V-PAP, a CPAP, oxygen, all which would be considered life-saving devices, is that right?
Oxygen are the ones we have, we don't have any medical necessity, CPAP or anything like that. On file.
Oxygen, what other cities do something similar to this? Is fairly common, or do they have more complicated procedures?
No, it's fairly common, and actually, the guideline to become a compliance without being shut off is more lenient than what we currently have for our customers that don't have medical necessity. We talked at some time, please correct me if I'm wrong, about situations like this. I mean, oxygen is only using a small amount of electricity. We talked about a meter that would allow that amount of flow through it without allowing everything else. I mean, if there's a bill of however much money you said before, that's a lot more bill there than just running oxygen things, is that right? That's correct. Because without a policy in place, they've been able to just continue to operate without... Just keep... Yeah. And we are looking at as staff right now, Chris is in charge of looking at different types of meters. Actually, there's probably a better option for options than, I call it, a restricted flow meter. Chris could speak to the technical piece of it better than I could, if he has specific questions. But it's something that we are looking at as an alternative. It's still a possible alternative. Yes.
Is there a timeframe for when we might, as the council, see that? And is it something then that can be temporarily installed and then used somewhere else? Is it a mobile device?
Actually, the device that we're looking at is, could be controlled... Chris, you have to give the details of one.
It's just 30 meters? The 30-30 meter, did I read about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a 30-30 meter, which is more for the delinquent.
Get to the podium, I'm sorry.
Which is more for the delinquent that are real problematic. And what it does is it shuts the power off for 30 minutes and then back on for 30. The meters we're looking at are very complex in what they can do. They can do the 30-30, they can limit power, they can go as far as prepay, multiple different functions. A lot of what we're not really needing, but they will definitely do what we need to try and do to get the problem solved.
And then are they transferable, they can be put someplace for...
They can be put wherever we need to, just like any other meter would be. Where they do have some cell charges associated with them, we kind of really want to limit the amount we have, because we want to have them in place and not have them sitting on the shelf for use at wherever. So, getting those numbers nailed down is going to be the most important factor. But I think they will really do more.
Since we know that pretty soon, if we're talking about this, someone like yourself will come to us and ask for more money to buy these meters. How many families are we talking about here? Now, not much is owed, but how many families do they... 10? I think we came up with 12 on this. Well, yeah, but the thing is, is we have 12 that have a medical need. Okay. That doesn't mean that they're all, I mean, the majority of those 12 paying timely, things like that. You know, part of when Chris is talking numbers, we're also thinking, or numbers of meters as well, so, I mean, we... Utility building staff, Public Works Department knows the habitual non-payers for how often they have to shut them off. The idea would be to install that meter on those particular properties, because they have cellular service, and you would be able to program them via cellular service, as opposed to having to physically send someone out, put on a meter, pull it back out, things like that. So, it would create greater flexibility, whether it be restricted flow. I can tell you, there's issues with prepay, this is what if they run out of prepay in the middle of the night, where they're going to go to reload their meter, that type of thing. You know, so the idea is to figure out kind of how many we would need, and how we would actually apply, which program would work the best.
If we have, you care about the 30-30, where it's on for 30 minutes, off for 30 minutes, doesn't that put appliances at risk, like refrigerators and window air conditioning units and things like that?
You know, I don't see that that's any more an issue than a normal power outage would be.
Well, but isn't it part of utilities when that happens?
It can be at specific times of the year, yes. And that's where I think these have a function where we can do it from down in City Hall and just simply shut them off, which is going to be, I think, probably the best option. The 30-30 is just another option from the people I have talked to. They say that's the most, that received the most response, because people, they'll start watching a TV show or something, and they'll get their power shut off, so they come back in immediately. So, it's interesting, some of the stories I've heard from...
So, do you replace the existing meter, or do you just add this?
No, this would be a replacement to the existing meter. They're really the same meters that we have, it's just this is an extra added function within that meter. Takes a couple steps for it.
Loss-wise, what was, when it pulls one of these years?
One of these meters leaves around $350.
And compared to what we have now, what are we, $50, $60 a meter?
Any normal residential meter would probably be around $50. A business three-phase meter would be the $350, that's where it's the same meter. But it's on one phase, and that's, or it's cellular capacity work.
So, are we looking at purchasing these this budget year? Or would this be something we'd look at for the next budget year?
The meters, potentially this budget year.
What you're looking at tonight, though, is, Greg, you're asking us to look at this policy for medical necessity.
Correct.
And if we were to approve that, then you may come back with a meter, you know, it should come to some later on, and it's been worked towards that, but the initial is that we do a medical necessity. My question would be, if we approved this tonight, those that are currently on medical necessity obviously get a copy of the policy, so that they know what they're...
Yeah, well, we...
That kind of thing.
But roll out. Yeah, well, I mean, because the actual policy wouldn't become effective till April 1. If it's adopted yet this week, we would send a letter for every woman that has a letter on file with us, that a new policy has been adopted, and they get a copy of the policy and the effective date of medical order.
I have to say, I'm glad that you've already looked for a solution that doesn't put us in a place to make a decision about just, A, completely cutting somebody off, and B, and not letting them take advantage, or like letting someone take advantage of us. But I think that if we're serious about proceeding with these meters, that we should just wait and implement both at once, or at least time it, so that by the time the letter comes out and the policy is adopted, we have a meter ready to use, or we have meat jurors ready to use.
This policy session offer doesn't say...
Wait.
...wage or... Wade or cut down, or, you know, 30-30, or any, this is shut off if you're not in compliance in 30 days.
What's your effective date of?
April 1.
We could have the meters on hand by then. But that's a different guideline than what's stated in this policy.
Yeah. I mean, we need to amend this to include, you know, meters will be set to a restricted flow, so whatever.
And see, that's, you're getting, I think-
See, the worry now, or the reason is, one of the issues with the restricted flow meter, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, is requires a separate piece in there that creates a separation between the socket and the meter itself that allows for manipulation. And these are some of the issues that we're trying to work through.
Yeah, these adapters that we looked at basically are just that, an adapter. They end up with some issues. They hold the meter out farther, which securing that becomes a problem. And they have basically just a circuit breaker in them, and they can be real problematic. They don't always work. And then you have somebody that's without power and they can't reset it. So it becomes an issue in itself. So these meters, these newer meters that we're looking at do have the restricted flow capability to well, I haven't looked that far into that yet. It's been more of a remotest and that we're looking at, but this is part of the function of that meter.
And then some of the questions are, okay, if we go to cellular service on a select number of meters, who pays for the cost of that cellular service? All the customers at large?
Yeah.
Or just the ones that are requiring that service because of the failure to pay? So these are some of the issues we're trying to work through before we adopt. I mean, yeah, we can have the meters in here.
Yeah.
But some of these other questions need to be answered before we start slapping them on the place, because these are questions that are going to come up. So-
So we're going to put out a policy that could become inaccurate once we determine how the meter works and how we're willing to do the billing? Is that fair?
No.
Right, I know that the meter and the billing are a different issue. So this is just a 10-day extension to customers with medical needs. And have let the city know via their healthcare that they have those needs. They could come back and say, oh, I have needs. This is, it clearly says a policy.
Yeah, if they don't have a letter-
Already know this.
Yes, yeah. If they don't have a letter on file with the city, signed by a physician, then, yeah, this policy doesn't affect, they're treated like every other customer, even if they have a device that is being prescribed. They have to have it on file with the utility department.
So is it safe to say at some point in time, somebody had to make a rule that if you had a medical device, you were allowed to be delinquent to infinity without getting shut off because you have a medical need?
Well, in the absence of a policy, we didn't have the ability to shut them off because of the letter.
I see. So nothing addressed it then?
Correct.
Billy, you reviewed this policy and you're going to stand with it?
I have not, but I think you're talking about two different things here. The policy, the idea of meters is an entirely separate issue to me.
So as E-mail has pointed out, the problem right now is the lack of a policy in place and you could go for so they start the process with a new policy and then we can work towards the meters and stuff. Additional questions?
So this is only if you don't have a letter on hand right now, you have 30 days to get one, to qualify with the rest of these people?
You have to have the letter already on file with us. If you don't have a letter, you're just treated as a normal customer under our normal policies. If you actually have a letter on file now with a saying you have a device and it's been certified by a physician that you need it, then this policy would impact you for non-payment.
What if I come with a new letter? Also, not my option all the time tonight. This policy governs that new letter that I would bring you, the necessity letter, signed by the doctor.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The motion is to approve the policy as printed and what you're looking at. Are there any additional discussions on what the motion is? Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you, Chris. Are you staying up for the next one?
I'll stay up here.
Storm sewer, what? Tell us about this.
The corner of First and Highway 4 on Persson Street, on the northwest corner of the intersection along the curb line, had a sinkhole developed. That is right next to Catch Basin and a manhole that ties into the old storm sewer, which has some functionality still. So we needed to try and figure out what is going on there before we could decide which way we need to go to make the repair. So we contracted Mayor Services to come up and do the cleanout. They were supposed to be scheduled for this week. And they did, they were able to get up here last week and do it. And we wanted to do that to get this repaired and effect as fast as possible before we start getting some rains. So what we're asking is a recommendation of up to $25,000 for Mayor to make that.
What is your desire?
Second.
Second.
Then do an consecutive discussion.
Have they already done them?
They did get up here last week and do it, yes.
So you're asking for money for something that's already done?
It's already done, correct.
I have a real problem with that one.
But, Chris, can I ask, did doing the work stop that sinkhole from becoming a more critical issue?
This is, if it doesn't get fixed immediately and we start getting some rains, we could potentially lose part of our new highway, or new part of the paving through the highway there. Because it's right underneath, it's the storm sewer that connects under the highway and it's it's eroded, it's eroding away under the highway. So it, yeah, it can potentially become a big problem. If we get a big rain, we'd have some issues.
Basically, the contractor came in a week earlier than-
They came in a week earlier than, they just moved and they showed up and they were able to get up here. Like I said, we're trying to move on this as quick as we can because rains could start coming here.
So, Chris, we know what's there now, but you see the recurring?
What we have to do is basically abandon part of that storm sewer. We're going to dig out where the Catch Basin is and tie into the new sewer and plug off part of the old sewer throughout that block and just across the street.
So you have an actual plan?
We've got a plan and it's moving forward, yes.
So this is pretty much a situation where the cost of not acting at that time would likely exceed the cost of, whoops, we had to do something?
Yes. It would essentially potentially undermine and cause collapse on a part of K4 around here at the intersection.
And at this point in time, the administration, Greg, you can sign off on anything up to-
Well, I can tell you that I told them to move forward on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
This portion of K4 is portioned. We have jurisdiction over it.
Correct.
It's ours, so it's not K4 that if it failed, K-9 would be paying for it. If this portion fails, we're paying for it.
Correct. Then we only get $3,000 late mile a year, so-
Yeah.
Doesn't go very far.
That would buy a dirt bill.
When do you expect to have the correction work completed?
Should be done by Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, good deal. Any additional questions? Rule call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Moving on to C, State Street, page.
As part of the annual street maintenance program, we get a lot of complaints about State Street where the railroad tracks cross, or that co-op, just east of the trail. I talked to James Coy about it and he gave us a really good price to go in and fix it. And the plan, the design being that if in the future we want to pay the rest of State Street, that each end of this will be where we can tie in and then we kind of seamless addition to it. One of the good things about it is it will remove the existing drainage structures of above-ground concrete tunnels. It allows to grade the property right away there that always holds water right now because it just doesn't drain. So we'll have a lay-down curb for, we call it, to cross between the facilities and get rid of the moths. And we do recommend going with the acres to beds, more existential, more free agency, I think, because of the traffic there.
What is your desire?
I'll make the motion, $35,474.24 to Coy Construction.
Second. And then the consecutive discussion?
I'm assuming that we don't have bids from other people because mobilization would cause them to be accessible.
Yeah, this is a small project, I don't have 160 yards. I could be wrong, but we're not paying it out, but the mortgage could come up that far for that long now.
Tim, well, this is the complete area through there, right? All the areas that's bad, this little-
Yeah.
Clean metal area.
I mean, there's still a few issues with State Street because it's quite old, but this is where all the moths are.
This is a good project. It's been a good people line for a while, so I appreciate it.
I do have a problem with not even seeing that we've asked.
This is about $30 a square yard or less than what we've been usually getting for this. That's a very large difference.
Tim, I'm betting you look at six and eight inches, they're about the same square yards.
That's not possible.
Yes, it is. Square yards and the surface area.
That's on the yard of the concrete?
No, it's, no, it's square yards, not cubic yards.
Not cubic.
Yeah.
That's just surface area, not-
Yeah, it's just surface area. Then you take times .5 or .67 for cubic yards.
Okay, I'll keep it at that. Any other questions? Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yeah.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Both of them sound so confused. I need street sign bid.
Okay, this is two bids from the same company for signs. One is a continuation of our annual street name sign replacement program. We did some in, like, in December and to finish off last year's budget of it, and this is for this year's. It would be the remainder of the street name signs from north to south, all the way from Roosevelt up to Washington and north to Swenson, west to Manhattan. So we'll basically have a third of the talent left to do after this. Then the second portion is for various stop signs and speed limit signs, school home signs that we need to replenish. Two separate quotes, the total is, I think it's $5,024.24, if you can see it, we'll type over there. I'll just come up.
Council, what's your desire?
We approve $3,951 from the one, the lights light on the street name signs, and $1,473.60 from commodities. For a total of $5,424.60. Put this in the number in there, $0.60. That would be from-
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Tim?
Sorry. My only question was the, how do you determine when we need new stop signs, yield signs, and speed limit signs?
Well, when they get stolen or run over or pay more.
Tim, my question is back to the street signs. I appreciate the new signs a lot. You can see them, you know, from a long way and all that. When you get up and the pole is this way, the pole's not painted, they're not straight, the mask or... Are we not streaking or doing anything as we go?
I think we are.
I mean, this guy again, uh-
I'll just have to say-
And the poles-
Those are going to be better, I-
The silver poles do not appear to be getting painted. Correct. Down Main Street.
Silver poles, a lot of those should be going away.
Down Main Street, go look and see what you got.
Okay. I will. But that's the stuff that we're supposed to be, well, no, Main Street should be-
Look like Main was new to me.
Okay, well, I know we bought bars, poles.
Yeah, my agenda to see, you know, I'm excited to see them ever look good.
That's true, yes.
Hold on, can't. Late to the game, everybody's gonna-
Hey, I gotta catch up.
Any other questions, Tim? Prefer signage? Rule call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie. Excuse me, I need like a compartment bucket truck.
2012, like a department was due to get another truck, a regular duty truck, which would normally have a 3/4 ton truck with a utility box on the back. We wanted to look at the option of getting a smaller bucket truck that maybe would be a little more versatile to get into some of the areas that it's traveled with a bigger truck. The money wasn't there to get a new one, so the option to go with a used one to see how that worked and to see whether or not it actually worked as well as they hoped to have it work. And it has worked really well. The problem was that was a used truck and it was about the worst model year for that engine that's possible. So it's had a lot of problems and it's been pretty costly for repairs that have been kind of repetitive on some of the engine issues. So it came due for budget this year to replace it. They come up with the spec list and all the specs were met with the trucks. We sent out three bids. And two were returned from Altech out of St. Joseph, Missouri, and I-80 equipment at Palana, Illinois. Altech is allowing us $5,500 for trading with our truck, and I-80 was going to take Arizona and sign it. Researching on some auction sites and stuff, this truck's not really worth very much money, so $5,500 for trading is pretty good. So we're recommending that staff approves, or that staff recommends the purchase of the 2017 Altech AT35G bucket truck extended warranty from Altech Industries for the amount of $92,919.
Council, what is your desire?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions for Chris?
Does that include sales tax?
Wish to amend the motion to say plus sales tax?
And yes, you'll do withdraw or go after withdraw first?
You can do it either way.
I'd like to amend the motion to include sales tax on the $92,919.
Second or?
Second.
Now we're talking about that, plus sales tax, keep that in mind. Equipment and all that just come across whatever's on the truck, you know, Lucy, whatever things that you're going to use, they're all going to come across with you.
Yes.
Does it have a radio?
It does. No, it's able.
Able, yeah, it's not.
Serious.
Any questions, anybody? I see it a lot of places. I think it's a great changeover for them. So rule call, please.
Kelly?
Excuse me, you need to vote on the amendment first and then the motion as amended.
Okay.
Takes two votes.
Two votes. All those in favor of amending to include sales tax, they are?
I agree.
Same sign. Thank you, Bill.
Now, rule call.
Now, are there any questions after we end the official amendment? Rule call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
Motion Carey.
Bill, I'm just making sure you're listening.
I woke up there for a minute.
Just happened to be right up.
Tim's going to come out the topic of body, camera.
Well, we're looking at body one cameras. Probably it'd be best to have a policy prepared for before we purchase cameras. So what I brought for you today is just a policy on body one cameras for your review and suggestions or comments.
Tim, where did this, where did the base of this policy come from? Do you understand my question? Was it like the police officers association said, here's a good starting point, bring this to your community and modify it to come out of Wichita?
International.
Chicago. Okay.
Do you think I may have a follow-up almost?
Do we need a motion to adopt it before we discuss it?
I don't know that, what I didn't hear, Tim, are you asking for a motion to approve it or are you just asking for review and then give you?
Review and suggestions.
Greg, is that your understanding tonight too?
Yes.
So, Bill, we don't need any type of motion for the review and then we'll be done.
Correct.
Other departments have had, you know, started this process before we have been. In your conversation with your fellow peers and all that, did you brought any concerns or whatever that they found into this document?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, the main question has always been when you get the camera or video, who can access it and how do we deal with the public of video? So that was probably the biggest concern. And I know that in Jan, in July of last year, they passed the law in the city of Kansas that basically says it all video now should be treated just like an investigative report. So it basically lines video up with police reports and so you would be releasing video just as you would an investigative report.
Even if there's minors?
Minors are always handled a little differently.
Go ahead.
One of the things I had a question around, I've never thought about before, but a lot of provisions, and we'll have memory, so hopefully right there, that they couldn't delete or alter the video without your permission. Wouldn't it be a time where you would actually delete the video, I guess?
Well, and Bill could probably attest to this, there are some times that we use horizontal basis staggles on DUI stops and some courts will not allow us to show that video showing horizontal basis staggles or the case out.
Corey's asking what that means.
So that's why we have to delete that portion of the video.
Hopefully a law will read for me.
And so in those cases, we would have to delete that portion of the video for viewing in court.
That's what I'm saying. Tim, on this, is the expectation that every officer would have body, I was about to say body armor, body cameras, you know, where are the whole body worn cameras in? I mean, this is that, this is going there in your budget that you're projecting by cameras is for every, to be tied to the car, to be tied to the officer, to be tied to the story and all that. We're going to be able to meet this policy with the budget you've rejected from a capital item. I guess that's my question. This says every officer will have it. Are you projecting a capital plan that will bring that to fruition?
Well, I only have two officers on duty at a time, so I'm not going to be buying six cameras, just going to buy two.
But I only suspect we can have five on duty.
Well, we got five on duty, only two will have cameras.
Okay, this policy allows for that?
It doesn't say at all times, every officer on duty at all times should have a camera. It basically talks about people in uniform, which normally is a patrol type setting. So any officers that are on special duty don't necessarily have that video, but if you're doing vehicle stops or patrol, then that would be someone who's required the video. So if I have five guys out for like Kelly's fest, there's always somebody who's assigned to take calls. And that person would always be wearing the camera or the other somebody just be doing, you know, street, you know, giving corrections and stuff like that.
And I'm only quoting your art because I don't want to get us into a point where all of a sudden, well, we didn't give them a camera, you know, and all of that. I want to be sure that what we put out there, Bill can defend what this policy is. Bill, have you seen this policy?
I just gave a report, just a prebating report. Actually, I think I'd rather have Amy look at it. I mean, she ain't dealing with this.
And that's where we're going tonight, so I think those are all good things to have. Are there any other council members that wish to give an opinion or something?
This is probably a building block for me as far as getting two cameras now. In another year or two, two more cameras.
I'd like to have one for every officer. I don't want to spend a ton of money and then hate it.
You mean like good quality and?
Right. So if we wanted to upgrade, I want to make sure I'm getting into something that if I decided to buy one more, yeah, I want to buy two and then a year from now go, man, we should have went with that other.
Will these be able to be integrated into the car cameras which you already have?
There is a system that is available now that will integrate into the cars. But I will try to provide more than just that.
Under C four where it says if there is, if there is equipment malfunction, it's to be brought to the attention of the supervisor, so the replacement unit may be procured, C four. Does that mean that the company has them ready and available and could have one here the next day?
Well, not the next day, but within three days.
And you're comfortable with that? And that's why I think I am, are we better having three instead of two? If one comes down, we would still have two by having a backup available. Does that get into them? I'm not sure I'm going to like this brand yet and I need to give them a try and if it breaks down in the first ninety days, I think I need to look at a different brand.
Well, when I present cameras for approval, I'll probably present some at the purchase of two and there'll be an option for purchasing six. Or three. Just how much money I have. Survive.
Tim, what do you, I think we're ready, I think everybody's given your opinion and what do you see as the next action steps here? You come back at the next council for the clean down policy potentially in the next thirty days? And then how far after that do you look for a capital expenditure on cameras?
I'd like to look probably next month at the purchase of the cameras.
Any other thoughts for Tim, Bill, or?
I would assume it's kind of the software to do the editing, all that stuff.
Right.
Next, you want to give another?
And then there are a lot of options to, the software and being able to go on your phone and access camera. Being able to get video recorded to the cross streeting turn on one phone, so it's a lot of...
Really glad to see this was moving along since that's something you wanted and we've talked about for a couple of years and so you've solved a lot of the issues with storage and syncing with the car cam and things like that.
Thank you, Tim. So are you staying for the next one air machine or is?
Yeah, some power issue, you know, support. I have G, the fire department air machine. So our current air machine is not working. And we looked at having it repaired and it wasn't worth the repair. So then we basically got it set up to work, but work, but it's a lot of work to fill the tanks, have to manually do just about everything. So we're looking at replacing that, and this is the air machine that actually fills the tanks that they wear so that they can breathe.
It's a compressor that's for breathing the air, it's not actually a filter, compressor. Lot fancier filters.
So the little bid here was from Fel Fire, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five. I don't think we've ever used Fel Fire before, but many of the agencies in this area have. A slime is used on the...
This is budgeted, right?
So can you have a discussion? Is there a recommendation? I mean, sorry, is there a motion here?
I'll make the motion to approve the Fel Fire for twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars.
For a second?
Second.
And move the second, now you can ask your question.
Oh, you answered. So this is a stationary unit that stays at the fire department, it's not mobile. And I'm assuming the unit we already have is three phase, so it's just getting that one out, put a new one in, pretty easy.
I assume it's a lot of, it's going to be hooked up, because actually there's a component system, there's a pump, there's a cascade system, then there's a cascade control system, and then there's a fill station. That would be all the works together.
Yeah.
But this is actually part of four, this is actually a bit for two of those components, the pump itself and then the cascade control, that's it.
Tim, would there be any possibility, or Greg, you can answer this, go into real fire because this is something that is used on boats and then say, hey, this is outside the ordinary, we don't really do this, we split functions.
We've been, but part of the agreement is they pay us so much for equipment and maintenance of equipment each year. Camera one, if you know, is player, what's the flat amount they pay each year, is it forty, around forty thousand dollars? Thirty-two, forty thousand dollars if I remember.
Some are in there.
Prior to the fees. So no. I mean, we could ask, but I think it falls within what we provide. As part of our contract or agreement.
So if it's vertigo for C that Tim is asking that the part of the sales tax money be used to cover this capital? Greg, are you, are you really, do you want to respond to that?
Since I'm on the road, yes. Yeah, the recommendation is that, that the, you know, at the year end, each year, we identify capital expenditures to use that absent sales tax on. And since this is an unbudgeted expenditure, directly using that sales tax and essentially reimbursing the fire department budget in that amount for the expenditure on the air issue.
From the twenty sixteen?
Twenty seventeen. So we're talking about dollars we haven't collected yet. So essentially what will happen is it will come out of the capital or come out of the fire department budget right now. So essentially, they come year end, they're going to be running at a deficit, but then at year end, we'll make that transfer of sales tax dollars into the fire department budget to cover that expenditure.
As we just said, people said.
Yes.
So if they're really good and they don't buy a lot of six inch hoes and all that and they only end up with ten thousand deficit, do you put ten in or do you reimburse it?
Historically, we've reimbursed a whole amount.
Vios? Are there any other questions here? We're adding, it's a very necessity and I think what comes to say, you know, that there's, you can't do without, so that's my thought. Any other question, anybody? Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Kelly?
Motion Carey. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Tim, you have to stay with this one, ambulance cot?
Yeah, we need to replace our ambulance cot. We had a striker caught in the ambulance that was wrecked. Because the accident was at a speed of over eight miles per hour, the company that produces the cot will not certify it. Therefore, we have to have it replaced. We did receive some money from the insurance company to help pay for or offset the cost of the cot, but it wasn't quite enough to pay for the whole thing. But the recommendation is to go with fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars from Canadian safety productions or products.
What would you desire?
Motion to approve the bid for fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars from animal safety products.
And move the second to discussion?
So there is actually a line item reimbursement for the cot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was on our property list for insurance.
Tim, I see you're using that same line or a little bit reimbursed on the absent sales tax.
Just for his.
Well, we see that on the cameras.
Who knows?
Are there any questions here? Again, we're using the cot now, the borrowed cot, or are we? Are we still using the striker that we had?
No, we haven't legally used a striker.
So we're using the borrowed cot?
Borrowed cot, okay.
Any other questions?
Back this cot, if this purchase is approved, will be delivered to the ambulance company and then the ambulance will be delivered with cop in it.
Rule call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Email?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lady?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Motion Carey, thank you, Tim. Adam I, GSI Engineering, you should have that information before you, Greg?
I have a proposal in front of you from GSI Engineering Materials Testing Services. This is for the EMS building. Part of what we will require as part of the project. Need to get an agreement in place and work is already done. We need to start doing some soil testing. There's an outline of the services provided, soil testing to concrete masonry testing, and then the services provided that include what is to incur in the field and the professional review. The agreement is an amount not to exceed four thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This is a not to exceed amount, we will only pay for those services that are actually used.
What would you desire?
Mr. Greg?
And move, is there a second?
Second.
Easy discussion.
So this is outside of the contract you have already for, with the general contractor? Yes, yeah.
So this is on top of the seven hundred and thousand?
Well, yeah, we also have ninety thousand worth put into the project also, so. Yes.
Other questions for Greg?
This is the only proposal received we to take.
Yeah, typically we do because by the time crunch, this is what we got. But we have a hole underground and we can't do anything until we have soil testing now, so. Cost wise, I did run it by Tim, is competitive with... Cost-wise, I did run it by Tim, it's competitive with what other projects we've done for materials testing.
We have business with family boards and that.
Yes.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Kelly? Yes, Eddie? Yes, Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
E-mail?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried, no executive session.
Correct.
Moving on to the second, Tim reports. Tim, you want to go first?
Which one?
Get ready to go.
So, okay. Well, I just wanted to briefly talk about a little bit, we had the cop with the cop Saturday at the Oak Rine, which was well-attended, I think there were a lot of dozen police officers from different agencies that attended. And here, just recently, the F and E home asked if they could put something on similar with the fire EMS. So, Matt, have they talked to you about this?
Yes.
So we're looking, maybe doing something to involve fire EMS and something like this as well, so we're excited to see this get up off the floor and start growing. So, pretty excited about that. I love that you, you drove by the shaky center and seeing our big pile of dirt that they've started to dig. A hole, we have a big hole. So, I don't know, I think it's been, we started this project and it's been about six years, so.
Is that just to push the old ambulance into?
Footy, footy.
Sorry.
Copy with the cop, how many you had total officers there, how many others were there?
Uh, did you say, the building was pretty full, so I didn't count. Could be all, all of the people that was in and out, people coming in and out. So we tried to make it worth a while for the Oak Rine and this is a great opportunity for it to come in, so I think that's, I like it.
Do you buy?
Myself, but I would buy some for you.
I thought the chatter in the public was very positive.
Yeah, I didn't have any negative, which was good. But, but you know, I encourage maybe too, I want to hear it all, so if anybody has something to say, it's an opportunity to answer.
Tim, anything else, or do you want us to, let you go?
Other than a worry process of hiring a small officer, we had testing this last week. We will be doing oral boards next week sometime, and we're looking at seven potential candidates for positions, so.
Oral board's on the eleventh.
Sorry?
Oral board's on the eleventh.
That's correct.
That's why I was instructed to be there.
Yes.
To make sure.
The eleventh, ten o'clock.
And that's all I have for now, thank you very much. Thank you, Tim.
About a member, excuse me, about a member, so that we approached you about publishing ads throughout the year and the publication that was going to be put out by the Kansas Society of Association Executives, which is basically the hub for all of the association conferences. And you approved it? We went ahead and answered a call and that we actually, I think, possibly even started the idea for, we initiated a conversation with the organization publishing this probably two or three months ago when we first found out about the possibility of this new publication, just saying, would you be interested in content for your magazine? We would like to provide content for it, knowing that that would also provide us publicity for the conference center as well. They came back with an inquiry and to several others, saying we are asking for articles, if you would like to give us ideas for topics. We would entertain the idea of accepting this and then reviewing this and republishing our publication. And we will be sending them topics this coming week and we will be working with Ann Park on those topics to provide content as it's approved, so I think that's a little positive thing for us. We also found out certainly that we will be hosting a kickoff event for the Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism for their marketing year. And we will be hosting this here at the conference center. This was really largely on part to Jim Richardson agreeing very generously to provide a program that would be on how to take great photos and utilize apps. So, I tell everyone jokingly that he makes it look so easy that this is the kind of, he tells you there's a great new app you need to use, so almost convention, about two minutes, so if you buy this app, you'll be able to take pictures of this. But anyhow, he'll be teaching this class, it'll be about an hour and a half long probably. And then we'll be opening up photo opportunities throughout the community to include Bethany College, I already contacted the college, and they'll be opening up a couple of different departments that day to allow individuals to be on campus and to see what's going on. So we'll have those things going on in our community. In conjunction with that, we also found out this week that we will be hosting a woman from the state of Virginia who is considered a social media influencer. She has over seventy-four thousand followers on Instagram. And the state of Kansas, for the first time this year, is going to be utilizing this integrated social media campaign. And so this woman will be visiting our state for just a short period of time, just a portion of the week. She'll mainly be focusing on traveling in the Wilson Lake area and the Knottles Lake area, because it has some of the best hiking in the state of Kansas, and she'll be posting pictures and content on her Instagram. We will be hosting her here, and this will be one of her overnight stays, and we'll be in conjunction with that same event. So we'll be putting together, for the marketing company out of T-Pee, we'll be putting together again that evening with some people that'll get together with her for dinner and just host her while she's here in town, maybe a bunch of times. So looking forward to all that, I think those are all positive things for our community. So, any questions?
Do you have the brand with the New York presence and all that, do we know, do you know what I'm talking about? Is there a way to measure from that, or do you know?
I suppose if someone says they see it when they come here, other than, other than that, we don't have no way to measure. That's one of the most difficult parts, but I think this position is measuring those things. We have our best measures now through social media, and we'll be actually participating with Ad hoc in, I think, what will be a really positive Facebook campaign that we're gonna start here in the next couple of weeks, so. And I can tell you more about that as they finalize, start, I knew it and adopted, but more about that with you.
Thank you, Holly. Any questions for Holly before she leaves?
All right.
Probably heard me talking a little bit Friday, or later, and noticed I've written a lot about working on the street plan for the year. Since I've been studying the bad spots and trying to plan it out, so I want to give you a heads up of what we're looking at for once a year. Chip Hill, we'll do the one, two, and three hundred block of North Justin. The three hundred block of West State. One, two, and cul-de-sac of North Pine. To the end of Ford of North Pine. Hundred block of North Cherry. I have three hundred block of Seer, six hundred block of Third and Cul-de-sac, and then one, two, and three hundred of North Quirks, so that's Chip Hill. You follow that, right? And then the fun part, the asphalt paving that we propose would be, the main project would be Olson from Kansas to Main. It's really bad for the second to Main and where that log area is, we had a lot of blowouts over there, made a lot of repairs on the whole area. So what we're looking at is from Main Street, we have to use to the alley, it would be six inches of normal overlay, the fly ash subway. And then it gets pretty good for about a block and a half, we would go over to the mid-four inch mill of overlay until we get to First Street, and then from First to Kansas, we'd go back to the six inch mill of overlay. And then another project that we're looking, I'll say the last one that we want, asphalt paving, would be the five hundred block of North Pine. And that's continuing on, we're working with Coy for a bit on, he's got a machine to clean out a ditch, a ditch on the south side of Swenson, Western Pine, it's so narrow, we don't have anything that would really fit in there, you know, it's all yard for those people to get in there and hack it up. So Coy's got a machine that he can use to make it a nice tracky ditch and get it down to, because right now we're backing so much water up on the pine, and we don't want to pave it if we can't get that, that ditch cleaned up. Anyway, we're working on a bid on that, but that's to follow, we don't bring it forward. Anyway, all of this is God forbid, and should bring it to you at the next council meeting. One other aspect, I was really happy with the quote that Coy gave us for St. Street. And we have another bad spot on West Lake, you've always heard me say I want to get West Lincoln paved, avoid some S and B concrete. The bad spot is down by the slough, it's just like what's on Olson, the asphalt's all all alligatored out. And we would like to plan on next, next spring making that about block project. Coy said he would pretty much hold those prices, same prices, the same kind of, same standard of work as we're doing on St. Street. And then we've looked at how we could pave the rest of Lincoln, and it really looks like our bonding capacity is gonna be pretty well used up, probably on, likely on the storm grain issues or stormwater issues. So we're looking at possibly completing West Lincoln in a three to four-stage project. Based on those prices, that would be about half a million dollar project as opposed to the million dollar that we've been thinking of. So that's something we're planning on, you don't wipe the shadow of it, you need to, we would be moving that direction.
Tim, what's the, have we done crack sealing and not having the bad stuff, is that something that's gonna come back?
Well, yeah, we, we have a machine that, well, it's basically, yeah, it got so bad that we could all, we could use it and it would have salvaged. We would have a biomachine or a machine. I, you know, Chris has talked about it, I think it's something we'd like to get back into. So many of the roads that, you know, we didn't do enough maintenance for so long, that they're beyond crack sealing, and there are some that could definitely benefit from it.
So some here, instead of doing a block of asphalt, you may say, market it by a crack sealing machine this year or whatever, I don't know how much they are, but you know, is that, you know, I mean, would that be a possibility, and then what's the plan for that going forward? Because that should extend out a lot, or whatever you do.
We might be able to, that might be something that we lose.
Oh, okay.
They are available on a lease mark.
Okay. Questions for Tim?
Thank you.
Tim? Others?
Yes, if you take one, pass it on, take one, pass it on. Part of a two thousand sixteen audit, everybody gets to fill out, I've got everybody, they'll get passed. Related parties questionnaire for the audit, basically wanting to make sure that you're cross-breaking individually from the city or indebted to the city in any way, not only you, but your family members. My recommendation would be for actually, let's see, I would make a point that since the city's website is with City Plus, that you're employed by City Plus and, and just make a note on the app. Any interest in we do business with your store, same thing?
Does it work in the pool?
No.
Blame something?
We shift things through UPS now. Yeah, but what's the dollar amount, apparently? I don't know. Yeah, I might as well make a note on it, that way you're covered in blamely simplex for ALS, and then also for you with Auto-Large.
That was for your version, for an expense with the cessus and ten with Canadian?
No. Or also, even if it's family members, they may, you need to make note of that also, they have a contract with the city.
So the first one's property, second one's goods, second one, third one's transferred assets, right?
Correct.
So majority of the other know, but UPS in there?
For, yeah, most of it would be under the second one, yeah. Goods, services, etc. Indebted, this Larry gave me a different way to look at this, I look at it in terms of whether you had gotten a loan from the city in some way, shape, or Larry pointed out that, well, everybody gets utility bills, so you're indebted to a certain level. So say, yes, you're incurred in debt, you incur debt to the city, but I will also make in the comments section that it's your monthly utility bill. That's number two. I, I don't have a form in front of me. It would be, yes.
What am I hearing now?
Just so you know, I feel my own wrong, because I feel indebted to the city.
We're in the two.
I was gonna say, somebody's gotta go there, so.
A material interest, nobody's had a material interest in the words of a CFO, or was that what it was called? Decimal desk?
Decimal desk.
No one has a material interest. That's our question number three.
Do you read these?
Yes.
Any other others? Or are you finishing up? Others? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Would you say, all of us prepare to say aye? At the same time? Thank you all very much.